This is a recording of the South Park Public Library Board of Trustees. It is November twelfth. At seven oh one P M. We will do a roll call. I've got Lynn Blair.
Tammy Sag.
Jen Melvin.
Andrea Bugsy.
Michael McMan.
Okay.
Hi, Jen.
And Tracy, Ms. Larr is on Zoom.
Okay, public comments. I don't see any members to the public here.
Nobody online.
So we'll go out to communications.
So I sent everybody that's on email. So if you don't want it, you can just round it back to me. This is the monthly report that I sent. I'm at today's department head meeting with the town chief administrative officer and all the department heads. A basic rundown of this is we had another really good month in October. As you'll see in the statistics, we circulated five thousand four hundred and thirty items, which is up fourteen point two nine percent from October twenty three. And then you'll also see when I do the program statistics, but the numbers are there as well. Our circulation librarian, Tanya Sullivan, resigned and we hired Andrea to take her place. Andrea will be starting tomorrow. So that will be good. She'll be training with some of our existing staff. She has worked with us before in the past around like twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. So I think it should be a pretty easy onboarding for her. The Friends Annual Basket Raffle is accepting donations of baskets the ninth to the sixteenth. Tickets will be sold the eighteenth to December eleventh, and the drawing will be held on December eleventh at five thirty. It'll also feature which wanted to kind of have some ideas to try to liven things up for the raffle. Raffle, I'm sorry. I've been here since before nine o'clock this morning. My brain is not, not here.
Your brain is drafted.
My, my brain is extremely drafted. My brain needs bed. So we will be doing the raffle drawing on December eleventh at five thirty. That'll also feature a hot chocolate bar. You don't have to be present to win. You also don't have to buy raffle tickets to come in and enjoy the hot chocolate bar. It's just kind of a nice feature that the Friends will be doing. Tomorrow I will be dropping off money to the food pantry. We collect a dollar. We have one day a month that our staff can opt to dress down and donate a dollar to the food pantry. I'm going to be dropping off our annual donations to the food pantry tomorrow in advance of the Thanksgiving holiday. So hopefully that'll be a little boost in the supplies they can get for the community. We are also doing a giving tree. Each year I check in with the food pantry to see what items they are in need of. We've done hats, mittens, and scarves. This year they said they're in need of warm socks for all ages. So we will be collecting socks, new unused socks from November first to December sixteenth. Good range of programs being offered in November and December. The public health nurse will be doing a stop the bleed training. Nancy Zedon is going to be doing her card making program again. And then we'll be doing a session on homesteading on December fourth. And then patrons have asked us to create a monthly knitting group and we pulled that together.
I saw that.
Yeah, so that'll be the first Tuesday of each month at ten in the morning. And did you, you, you came to the first one?
I've been to both.
I, I thought it.
And time is itful that it is ten A M. Instead of at a time when working people who knit could come. Just saying.
We can work on that. They were very helpful knitters. Just like, hey, neighbor, can I help you knit that? Like, yes, it was just lovely.
Can I come and pay them to knit for me?
But yeah.
I have seventeen projects that I'm in the middle of. It would be really awesome if it wasn't at ten A M.
I thought it was very well attended. Everybody seemed to really like it. So maybe if the, um, the woman who's kind of coordinating, well, we're coordinating it, but as you know, there's kind of a woman who's leading it. If we can find somebody who's willing to kind of take it on in the evening, that's always a possibility. We just need to have somebody who knows what they're doing because I don't know what I'm doing when it comes to knitting.
I know what I'm doing.
You know, you're, you're a knitter. If you'd like to check in with me sometime and we'll see, maybe we can set something up in the evenings. This is kind of just, it's basically just drop in. So we can structure it the same way. We have a woman who's kind of teaching people basic knitting skills, but also we kind of left it open to like if somebody is a inexperienced knitter, they can come in, bring their supplies, and then just, you know, work with friends. So, yeah, if you're, if you're interested, Jen, just touch base with me and we'll, I'm, I'm sure we can set something up easy enough. And then the company we were using for our event, they had a little downtime, unexpected technology issues for about like, it's like a week and a half or two weeks. They came back up. It was like a week later, they sent out an email saying that their son's setting the feature, not offering it anymore as of like October thirty first. So I am in the process of obviously trying to get a refund from them because we had just paid for our annual subscription the month before they decided to drop it unexpectedly. And then we are signing up for another, another, another platform, similar thing, event calendar.
There was two platforms you were looking at. Is it the one that you're signing up for or the one that, that you didn't originally go with?
Actually, we discovered a new one. That's called, we were looking at one called Asabet, and that one was actually more on the expensive side. I found another one called Local Hop. And they are very reasonably priced. We did a demo. All the staff really liked it. So that's going to be the one that we're going with. So I'm hoping for like a December first kickoff that we spend the time right now getting all our events on there, getting used to it, and then December first or whatever the first Monday is in December. And then really making it public for patrons. Because it's really nice to have a platform to register, have people register for events because having a handwritten document at the desk is complicated, cumbersome.
And I like the, I liked it. It was a little, not your fault, but I was bummed. I was like, why, why would they do that?
It's, I, I don't.
It was user friendly and it was.
Popular feature. I don't know. I don't get it.
What is the new program called?
Local Hop.
Thank you.
Yep. And yeah, like I said, we did a demo. The staff really liked it. They have a lot of features. They seem easy to use. So we're gonna go with that one. And then we were experiencing issues with our book vendor. There's just, they, they've gotten better in the past couple of weeks, but there has been a lot of delays through all the libraries that use them.
This is one of the big vendors that you've been using.
Yes. Yep, yep. There's been some really big delays. They're getting caught up. But, um, you know, we used to be able to have things before they were published, so we have them ready to go on the day of. That's not the case anymore. But then we were waiting like weeks up to a month or two for things and people want their new stuff. So, you know. It has gotten better. Still getting a few comments that, you know, we're, we're not getting the newer things in as quickly, but it seems to be resolving. It's happened to a lot of other libraries. Some are actually experiencing a lot worse than we are. So.
Because there seems to be only a couple of big companies.
Yeah. And this, this is the most popular one. And even with the delays, they're still the easiest to work with. But just so you all are aware, so anybody says anything, you know, it's something we're aware of, trying to resolve. It seems to be getting better. But and then lastly, the staff attended the trunk retreat. We saw some of them there on the twenty sixth. Ask the Adams family. And that was really fun. The, the kids recognized, especially the children's library, and they don't recognize, I'm, I'm in the background, they don't recognize me as much. But they recognized the children's librarians. There were three of us there. It was a really, a really nice time to, to do some good outreach.
That was old business. I have a question for new business. Can I ask it now? Okay, so we did the truck retreat and it was awesome. Are you gonna do a tree at town hall this year?
Yes, yeah. Tracy offered to donate the cost of it. So we're gonna have one of the indoor spots. And the setup is December thirteenth, which is ironically, I'm gonna be off that day, but I have two other staff members who are gonna go over and decorate the tree and make it look nice.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, Tracy.
I think she's trying to get off mute, but she's smiling, so.
No problem.
Okay. Did I have anything else for communication? No, I did not. So October minute. If anybody has any edits or anything otherwise, you could vote to approve. So if you have a spare, I guess. Yeah. I think there was one that wasn't double sided. I think Tammy may have gotten that one. Yeah.
Okay, that seems to be the states to the minutes.
Motion to vote.
In favor.
Amy says aye. Andrea, aye.
I'm good.
Michael, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Okay, move on from there.
Just on the edge of measurement.
My kids grow up on the summer camp called Camp Cough. It's like kennel cough for children. It hasn't gone away yet.
I was gonna say, summer camp as in like.
August.
August.
Yeah.
Wow.
It just keeps like, it'll like die down and then they'll come back. And I don't know what is.
In you or are you giving it to each other?
No, it's just me.
So October numbers, as I mentioned previously, were very good. Circulations are up, which is great. Thirty new, thirty-two new cards. Hundred and forty-three computer uses. Door count numbers were good. And then still a decrease on the digital collections. The hoopla and the Libby are still doing very well as well.
Well, what means about up and mostly about a hundred with lots. That's great.
And then the programs also doing good October. Eleven adult programs, four teens, four childrens, five general audience. Overall, two hundred and fifty-four attended the programs. And then all of the passive and ongoing programs and the children's room are going well as well. The play area, the discovery zone, the crafting center, all of them, very, very popular. Question on the numbers.
Do you not provide a, um, a year before comparison for the programs because they're too, they're too dissimilar?
Well, I can. It's not that it's dissimilar. It's just that this was kind of, I only started doing this a couple of months ago. I mean, I could definitely dive back into last year's numbers and just put those for, for future reference. You can see how we're doing.
I, I think I wouldn't task you with that added bit of work, but I'm curious. It's nice to be able to see like, oh, like to have actual document improvement. And do you have a sense of like what's going well? Can you say, oh, yeah, we started doing this and this is why our circulation is up? Or do you?
You know, I think with the past, since July, July, August, September, and now October, it's just been doing really well. I think is that just I've really been focusing on the displays, our marketing, our communications, really just creating a schedule for myself for having our social media posts out there, our emails out there. Not burying people in emails, but just making sure we have regular communications. And yeah, I think, I think it's just a lot of just trying to get our, our marketing and our communications in order, which is what I've been doing over the summer and into the fall.
I like the list service because then people, you know, just get them all. Like you said, you're not, you get what you're interested in.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And like the library where features where you can sign up for, I want to receive like the best sellers by email or this or that, you know, you can kind of pick and choose. And then really just making sure that kind of everything out in our library is organized and attractive looking so that people can come in and have a good experience. I think that really helps too. And I think, you know, the staff work very well to make sure that it's a really welcoming place. So we have a lot of new people coming in and we're really trying to make sure that everybody has a really welcoming experience and then they keep coming back. And people, people really love this library, which is great, you know. So.
What is dramatic, like?
That is, if you go into the children's room right in front of the windows where that big plastic house used to be, Molly and Dana have like a rotating, a rotating like theme. So they've done like a flower shop. They've done like a grocery store where the kids have like a play cash register and they've done a veterinarian's office. So they have like a rotating theme for the play. I think they do it maybe quarterly or every other month or so they change it up. And it's really nice that they keep track of all the statistics because even though it's not, you know, circulation statistics, they're still, we can still say, look how many people are coming in per month to use.
Kids can go there, actually touch the stuff.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. It's nothing that's borrowed, but it's something that they can do while they're here. That's, that's interactive. And, you know, even if they don't check out any books, our numbers can show that they're still coming in and using, using that play area. Any other questions?
Speaking of children's, do you have a Tooney? Have you heard of those?
We do. We have the, the Tooney, the Tooney box, the little red square thing. Yes, we have one of those. Yep.
Okay, good. That's just good to know because with the kid. Thank you.
What's a Tooney box?
I don't have kids. It's like a little, it's a little box. And then there's little figurines that you can kind of put on the box and they'll like sing songs and tell stories. And I think we have some that's like Paw Patrol and you can get different like Disney princesses, things like that.
Okay. I'm thinking through an idea, a thought. When we look at the adult programs and we say, okay, there's eleven of them and we had a hundred and twenty-eight people, which is probably like about twelve people per program. That's great. Do we ever track the demographics of the people that are coming in?
No. By demographics, you mean like if they're like millennials or like, you know what I mean?
Yeah. So here's, here's my thought, right? Like I got sad when the knitting program was at ten because there's no day that I'm ever going to be able to come to a knitting program at the library at ten, even though like so there. Right? And I know like when I'm looking at like, okay, the teen attendance, we had four programs, thirty-two kids, children, four programs, thirty-three kids, general audience, five programs, sixty-one people. Like, and I'm thinking about it. I'm like, I know that there are tons and tons of teens and kids that would be in those doors all the time, right? And there's tons of parents who came when their kids were tots. And then they stop coming when their kids get to be school age children. And then I'm sure that they come back at some point. But my guess is, and I don't have any data to prove it, but my guess is, is that there's these chunks of people that don't have the same kind of interaction with the library that they did when their kids were young or they do once their kids are out of the house. And I'm wondering if there's a way to track that and see if it's possible to start targeting some of those demographics that have found it less accessible by thinking about what times programs are done or thinking about like having children's program concurrent with an adult program. So the kids can be involved in one thing while parents are involved with other stuff like that.
In terms of trying to capture data, the annual survey that you do in April asks what programs or what things the library does that you like or you don't like, or what would you like to add? And people for the last ten or twelve years have always said, well, if you open on Sunday afternoons or two or three o'clock on Saturdays, or if you open Friday, which again is always the staffing issue. We don't have enough staff to do Sunday afternoon.
But like right now, it is seven twenty on a Tuesday. How often do we do programs like at this point in the week? Right? A- a- again, it's just a question because I'm curious and I know that like I would do more things and I know that I have friends that are my age that would do more things if it was time different and there was other things going on for other age groups.
You've got to kick off with the last month for the, the Friends meeting. You can get a speaker talking about ghosts. Twenty-five or thirty people in the room.
Yeah, I mean, I know kind of one of the, one of the untasked groups is, you know, the millennials. Exactly.
You're a dinner, you, you're. I'm an exennial actually, but okay.
I mean, even people my age, you know, is, is the ones that we're really trying to reach. So I'm, I'm always kind of looking for new ideas for programs and, and whatnot. One thing that I do, I do have to keep in mind and, and you know, and please don't think that I'm, that I'm trying to, you know, you know, say anything about that is, you know, my job is the adult services librarian slash director. So I do all of the, you know, the day to day and all of that. And as, as well as the adult programming and handling everything in the adult department. So I'm, I'm kind of in the point right now and I recognize what you're saying is that I'm trying, I feel the demand for new programming and new things, but I also feel the, the time constraints, you know.
And we're also a library, not the community center. And I'm not trying to say like you need to up the numbers or that there's a problem. I'm just curious what the.
Absolutely.
Well, we're, I, I think what you're kind of suggesting is we fill in the gaps because there's no Boys and Girls Club. There's no Y M C A. There's no et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We just don't have that in the community.
Certainly, yeah.
Well, with the staff, there's only so much.
Yeah, there, there's only, there's only so much we can do. And I think we're, we're kind of approaching the point of what we have the, the time and the staffing for, which is not a bad place to be in because, you know, we're, we're doing really good, really good things, really good programs. You know, in, in the perfect world, we'd have somebody to just run the adult programs, but you know, obviously if we're, as we're going to discuss for other staffing, there's, there's other areas of need first. But, um, yeah, so we do try to run, I, I have actually been getting some, and dare I say, I never want to kind of group anybody into what I'm assuming that their, their generation is, you know, they've, we have been getting some people, new people into the craft programs that we're doing, which is, which is really good. I tried to do like maybe one of those in the morning or afternoon and then one of those in the evening per month. But, but yeah, that is, that is kind of the, the major untapped group that I've really noticed. I think people are just so busy. So I have to make sure that it's something that they're really gonna make the time for, you know, because somebody my age is super busy. They're not gonna make the time for something unless they're really gonna enjoy it or get something out of it for.
Because again, when you're told that kind of age group, they're working during the day.
People work during the day?
Well, they, they could be in their working room or they could be in an office or a factory or wherever it might be. So the only time they can come is evenings or on a Saturday.
Yeah, exactly. And they're not going to come for something that's not exciting to them. So we have to make sure that, you know, find stuff that's, that's really engaging. And the crafts I've noticed have gotten some people. It's tough because they fill up so quickly that, you know, and we only have the, you know, the resources to offer a certain amount of them. But, um, yeah, that is, but maybe, maybe there's something we can do when I can talk to our children's librarian and see what she thinks of like.
Mommy daughter or mommy day?
You know, it's over here, adults over here working on something. Maybe that's something they can do together. Maybe it's something that, you know, the kids are over there working on their stuff and then mom is still in the same room, but also like, you know, having a little bit of peace and quiet with other adults, something like that. I can see if something, if that's something she's potentially interested in, maybe we can collaborate on.
Because you're running like two book clubs, one during the day and one in the evening.
Yep.
Try to hit different markets.
Hit different markets. Yep. We try to offer, I try to do a couple evening programs a month. But also to being mindful of, of my schedule and the constraints on that, you know, because if we have an evening program, like for example, today, I got here before nine o'clock this morning and I've been here, you know, I'm not going home till after eight o'clock tonight. You know, because I am expected to be here during the day. So I've really been trying to not overwhelm myself with the number of stuff we offer at night because it's, it's a challenge, you know, to try to maintain a schedule and have some, you know.
How did it go at the, was it a craft program that you did at three or something that you started at?
Yeah, the craft, yeah, the ones we've offered at three P M. Have been pretty popular. Yeah. So the ten A M. Three P. I've been doing like ten A M. Three P M. And then some starting at like six, six, six thirty, depending on how much time we need. And those always fill up. And we always have a waitlist. So those are always really good. So in, yeah, and you know, we have the cookbook club in the evening. We do our craft and chat in the evening. We have a book club in the evening. And then I try to do a couple other, you know, special events per month, which, you know, I think we've been doing more events now than we have in the past, which is really great. It's really great for our numbers. I think that's what's bringing in a lot of new people, which is great to see. But just trying also to kind of be, be mindful about, you know, time constraints and, and what we, what we do or don't have time for. And it, it changes, you know, from, from month to month. I mean, sure, this month, maybe this month in December, I have a little bit more time for things. But, you know, I know in January, when we're losing a staff member for her maternity leave, you know, I'm not going to have as much flexibility because I'm going to be doing that plus what I'm doing. So it's, it's kind of a game to just try to find the most balanced thing possible. While also handling all the unexpected, you know, day to days that pop up. But yeah, no, I, I appreciate your, your feedback. And I think that's, it's something that's kind of been.
And I think you're doing a great job.
You know. Was that Tracy? Yeah.
Yeah, I said I just doing a great job and you're, you know, really good. So.
Yeah.
And your staff.
And I don't want you to think that what I'm saying is that you're not.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. No, I, I hundred percent hear what you're saying. Yeah.
I was part of the five-year plan committee and.
I was part of the um five year plan committee and. One of the things um I wanted to say was, one of the things we focused on was marketing and really getting out there. And that's exactly what you said you've been doing and it's made a difference and I can see. All of the marketing, it's not like, oh, marketing did it, it's all these little pieces and you have to keep doing it and keep doing it, so that is. A lot of work. And the other thing that Lynn brought up as we rate in the beginning was. I need this demographic of people in their like mid thirties to. You know, maybe fifty where there's still kids at home and you're working during the day and. You know, all we could think of was give them wine, but that's not.
There's a limit on those one day liquor permits.
But so I I do know that it's been on Lynn's radar for a long time.
And just to piggyback off of the, not only I've been doing. Phenomenal job with marketing, but the just. Collaboration, not just like, you know, the trunk Gertrie, but. All the other community events, either you're. Working together with different groups in town or um. Trying to hit, you know, programs, I know that historical society was here for something. Or, you know, and I know the agcom and. And just, I just, I like, I like collaboration.
Yeah, yeah, I think I think. Our staff do a really good job of that and luckily, you know, the groups in town are always really willing to. To work with us and. And so, yeah, so maybe that's, maybe that's like a winter project. Let me sit down with Bali, see what she thinks about like. Children's programs slash adult programs.
Story together.
Yeah, something that they could kind of. Collaborate on, you know, project that they could work on together, something tangible they could take home and have it be like a special thing. Or also have it, you know, maybe the kids do a version of something, the adults do a version of something and, you know. See how that turns.
The libraries in Western Mass, do they still periodically meet? Just in terms of finding out what works for you or what have you tried and. Either do it or say no, it didn't work at all.
Yeah, I mean, C W R still has regular meetings, much as they did during like open times when everybody was trying to. Keep abreast of what everybody else was doing. But um, yeah, there's still frequent meetings with, usually it's more statewide, but that's not a bad thing. Um to see what everybody else is doing and. And we also have the email list that we can just blast out a question and say, hey, who's, where, this is, this is our idea. What's, what what are your millennials like? What are they actually coming to? And then you'll get suggestions. And then maybe we can, you know, twist it to to work with what we're doing here. I'm also hoping we're doing um an adult winter reading program and. Starting at the end of December, so I'm hoping that kind of testing the waters with something like that, like if it's something that like. Millennials can do from home, like I have an app, I'll just log my hours, put my tickets in for a prize. Maybe it's something that's a little less structured, you don't have to be here at this place and time, but you're still participating with us and. You know, something for that. And I've also been kind of focusing on the collection and like. I hate, it it has such a negative connotation, but like the book talk books. You know, make sure we have the the classics, the bestsellers that people want from the New York Times Bestseller List, but also. What is book talk talking about? These books that, you know, millennials wanna read.
What what's book talk?
It's like TikTok but for books, so people get on there and talk about the books they're reading and like what's popular and. You know, um it it's usually not the kind of stuff like the the classic literature that's gonna come up on like, you know. But it it's more of like flop stuff, but also making sure that we have that balance in the collection. That's, you know.
The other thing is, you, I wonder, you know, your electronic loans are increasing. And you don't know the demographics of people who are using those at all, do you?
I think there's there's probably a way to find out.
Because that, I mean, I wonder if I if I were Jen Bell and that's how I would be doing my.
No, field hockey is done, I'm not coaching anymore. But wait, what am I doing though?
Like reading electronically.
Oh, yeah, I don't. Books anymore. And also just FYI, Audible and Hoopla are my best friends because then I can listen to books in the car.
I'm sure there is a way that if I reached out to either C W Mars and Hoopla and said like. Because, well. Yeah, you have to give your, I think you have to, you have to have. Your your C W Mars card is designated, you know, we have like juvenile, young adults. Adult, senior citizen, they should probably be able to kind of give me a breakdown if I say, give me a picture of October. And what it looks like, you know, if there's a percentage of like. I mean, adult is kind of a wide range, it could probably be from like nineteen to to sixty, sixty five, whatever they determine senior citizen to be. But you could see how many like teens are using them, how many children, you know, so on.
So summary, you're doing a great job, there's always more to do, but.
Well, well, Jen is looking for a book talk.
Because my son played with my phone and deleted all of my apps. And then when I went to look at Hoopla to see what I was reading, I realized I hadn't redownloaded it yet, so now I'm distracted, I'm sorry.
That's okay. But yeah, long story short, book talk is like TikTok where people go online and talk about books, you know, and they're usually. You know. I don't know how well you know that, they're usually like the Colleen Hoover type books, that's, you know, they're 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 popular fiction, it's not something that's gonna. Win like the Nobel Prize or, you know, something, whatever, I can't, the the equivalent of like literature's.
Victorian murder mysteries are absolutely where it's at.
There, there you go, something like that, that's not, you know, and it's it's not bad, I read them too. I I go home and I read junk, it's fine, it's it's fun. But um but making sure that, you know, we're also, I think that's kind of hoping is recognizing what. People are reading, what's popular on social media and having that available, you know, because. Although it's not Jane Austen, it still has a place in collections and people want it, so. Anyway.
Telephone system up and running?
It is, yes, that's on here, uh so the telephone system is up and running. However, we have a couple bumps in the road as there always is um. The wireless phones that the staff really wanted. They are not working out um. They are. The ones that we got, they're very small, picture like old school flip phones, you know, the keys are very small. They're difficult to use, they don't interface well with the regular desk phones, like transferring calls and it's just not. So um I have the our rep looking into what we could do to just. I think it was nice. The idea of the wireless phone, so we can talk to people as we go. But they're just, they're, the functionality is not working for what we need. Now we know, so we're looking to see if we can replace those two wireless phones with just. And one of them's actually broken, one of them, the home button doesn't work. So I haven't been able to like, I noticed it when we first got them installed and I went to like record a voicemail to it. Doesn't work, so you can't get into any of the features or anything like that, so one of them, they have to replace because it's broken.
I also feel like there's something to be said with. Not having a phone next to you all the time. And. It's okay.
Yeah, so. That's that's a story with that, but the ones that actually do work, the corded ones work just fine um. We like them, they're. Fine, it's the wireless ones that are causing the problem.
And you got the box upside and smell.
Yes.
You have to do it yourself?
No, 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 no.
I almost did it.
Maintenance, maintenance came and it was, it was mostly getting them off of the pallets um that we needed assistance with. So, maintenance came, they're there. The doors are not functioning very well and I'm going back and forth with like the company we ordered from and the manufacturer because the doors are like in an angle. So they have like almost fallen. So the manufacturer is telling me to check the pavement, check the sidewalk that they're on, make sure that that's level, it's gotta not be level, that's why everything's messed up and I'm like. So, I'm gonna get a level. I'm home tonight. Bring it in tomorrow. See if the ground is actually level. And then if it's perfectly level, I'll take a picture of it and say, look, but um. Yeah, it's kind of, we've been going back and forth about that. They're great, they look nice, but for what, both of them, the doors, you really have to kind of. Up and in to actually get it to close because they're just like. And one of them, the pins on the bottom, it's not locking because the door's not level. So the pin on the top locks, but the bottom doesn't, so when you check the lock, there's still kind of a. So that's fun.
And these were not inexpensive.
Oh, no, no, yeah, yeah, so that's. That's been fun, but they do, you know, when I did buy them, I asked the company we bought them from if they honor the warranty from the manufacturer and they said yes. So. Obviously, something is it, I don't think the ground at our front entrance is that unlevel as to cause the door, the doors to drop that much.
Because you had the biggest ones there.
And they were fine, yeah, if it's not level, maybe maintenance can get. What should we call it? One of those things to just make it level um. But.
When you bought these, did they have a whole section about how the ground had to be perfectly level in order for it to work?
I don't think so.
I think you should look into that. And then I think you should go through a list of all of the books that are overdue, get really, really angry. And then call them.
Oh, I've 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 been angry. Because it's um, you know, our, this Saturday, our one circulation staff person who was working. Wasn't able to empty the book drops this Saturday because she felt uncomfortable, she wasn't, she might not have been able to lock them. And unfortunately, I wasn't around to be able to run by to open, unlock, empty and then do that. So our drops weren't empty on Saturday, we emptied them this morning, which is fine, we backdated everything, nobody's getting fines or anything like that um. But.
But something that is so. Causing convenience, should not make for more stress.
Yeah, exactly. So. Well, tomorrow will be the deciding factor, we'll see if the ground is actually level.
There's something added to the library of things that are level.
And even if it's not, unless it specifically says in the paperwork on buying it, that it has to be installed. Unperfectly level ground, it's still not your responsibility.
Yeah, I would, I would, I don't believe it said that, I was, I mean, it said a lot about, you know, ADA and making sure that it's accessible and this and that, but I don't. Believe there was anything, but that is a project for tomorrow. So we talked about the telephone system, um the CPC project update, I am still. I'm still waiting on a quote for taking down the trees um. They came to look at it like maybe a month or two ago and I've checked in twice to try to get them to send a quote, still waiting on it. Also still waiting on a quote. From the cement company about the path. To see what that cost will be, um he said he was gonna stop by last week, I didn't hear, so I'll have to check in again sometime this week to see if. We can get some numbers for that, so we know where we stand um. My concern is, I've been discussing. With Michael is obviously, you know. The longer we wait to order things, like the the features, the benches, the instruments.
Price goes up.
The price is gonna go up um. I was hoping to have them ordered. Soon, but obviously still waiting on. The costs of everything else.
And just in the future, there may be tariffs I've ordered stuff.
We, there's, there's, there's things we don't know, yes, so um. I I've almost, but I don't wanna order them and then put them in the basement. You know, so. I mean, I think the least we could potentially do is I could look into ordering the materials for the story walk. That would probably be okay in the basement, I don't want to store metal in the basement over the winter. Maybe we can get the things for the story walk.
Well, how soon do you know, fire thing, remember a couple of years ago, you had to get your middle fire, which you had to have to every week or?
No, every, I, maintenance hasn't been using it, everything seems to be fine down there. Yeah, that's a, not an issue.
I probably missed it and I'm sorry to ask. A question that's been answered.
That's okay.
Um, why are we getting rid of the crab apple trees?
Oh, um because we need the space to put in, they are too low. And we need to be able to put in a path. For our, the metal instrument features going in out there and um. They're in, they're in the way, they're too low, they're in the way.
Public. You have to have concrete like sidewalk to get to it. And it has to be a certain width and surface so that if someone came. In a wheelchair. Right?
Yeah.
Because I know the kids climbing those trees all the time.
Yes. Yeah, that all, that, yeah. Unfortunately. Yeah, they're they're just in the way, so. And they're not the prettiest things to look at, they only look good for like a month out of the year, if that um.
They smell like.
They smell nice and they look pretty for a brief period of time um. But overall, I think, I think it will look nice once we get everything actually in place um. So. I may try to look. Into ordering the stuff, I don't wanna overload our basement with a lot of stuff. I may just end up having to wait till the spring. I'm gonna try to check in with the cement guy and the tree guy this week. See where we're at with everything um. If if I do have to wait till the spring to order things. Is there any issue with that or I mean, I think at this point, it is what it is, unfortunately. But. So that's that. They covered the telephone system, um but in discussion, we we started that last month, the only other update I have is um. The position that we're asking to change the eighteen hour circulation position into. A um last time we asked for twenty nine and a half hours, I just said, we're just gonna go thirty, just round it up, it makes more sense um. So what I did a couple of years ago when we first asked for that, we had a job description for it. I went in, I reviewed the job description, I added some new things because the needs have changed. Um that job description is currently with the union, so they're reviewing that, they're also gonna get back to me on what they think an acceptable. Rate would be for that position.
All the union contract did get signed off on. In mid September.
Yep, so um.
And employees are getting the new. Rate of pay. Retroactive to join.
Yeah, so um I should hopefully have more information for you about that uh at our next meeting. As far as the new business, I covered the event calendar and registration software, we're hoping to debut local hop. Local hop in uh the beginning of December. I will circle back to the MLTA conference, um but the circulation librarian position, um Andrea will be starting tomorrow night. And she will be doing evenings and Saturdays, so we're glad to have somebody back for the evenings um. And then I already gave you the friends of the library basket raffle dates. And then we will circle back to, we can finish the evening. With Andrea, I also sent these via email, but in case you didn't get them, if Andrea, you wanted to add anything about um. The conference and if you had anything. Wanted to share with.
Thank you. So. Yes, um. Cindy and I went to the conference and Cindy was wonderful, she drove and gave me a. Great background on um being a library trustee. Um it was a very welcoming group, I think we should all be aware that it's twenty five dollars a year. For membership, Cindy and I are now members, but for a hundred dollars, our entire board could be members and we could just all. Chip in and have a, you know, chip in twenty dollars or fifteen dollars, however the math works out. And become. Uh members, anyway. The first speaker had this great um on the. Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. Site, he pointed out a um a link on their website that shows um. Library statistics. For every library across the state and you can find out how much of your town's budget goes into your library. Well, of all of the tax dollars that are collected in the town of Southwick. Only like one point six one percent or one point seven three percent comes to the library. Now, the state average is one point two percent, but. The town doesn't know the state average and if you look at. What however many people come into the library. On an annual basis and offer that statistic. Um it's a lot of people for one point. Say seven three percent of the library of the town budget to be covering. Um so that was helpful information. I thought it was really helpful in talking about what our roles are, our roles are to be advocates for the library, talk it up. And we all need to have this sort of the same story, we all. And we all need to have this sort of the same story. We all need to be saying the same thing. We're not speaking for the library because that's up to Lynn and her staff. But we are advocates for the library. Um, and we need to talk about amongst ourselves, well, what are the library strengths? What are the things we want to talk about? Share that story amongst each other and repeat it and repeat it and repeat it. Oh, ad- adapt your language to the people that you're speaking to. So if you're talking to the schools, you know, talk, oh, this is literacy, this is. This is exploratory learning. If you're talking to the senior center, change, change your dialogue again. If you're talking to the finance committee, change your dialogue again. Um, that was very helpful. Um, and just to put this in, they they warned us that to watch the town charter for changes. It might move library governance from a board of trustees. To the town and they said in particular, that might happen when you get a new town chief administrative officer. I don't think that's happened.
We, we don't have a term.
Oh, there you go, because I looked online. I couldn't find, I was. Okay, so we're safe. Is this too much? I think it's okay. Okay, um, the keynote speaker, Jason Homer of the Worcester Public Library. Said, you know, the whole point of being a library is we're all here to create a positive impact for our communities. That's the team we're on. He's, he challenged us to take a few minutes to get everybody's why, like to go around and say, well, Lynn, what makes you, you've got a hard job. What makes you come to work every day? What's the thing that draws you here? And um, Tammy, like what makes you come from your busy life and come here and be a library trustee? And Jen, my goodness, how, you know, so really talk about why we're here, what we believe in, and that also goes into our story of what we're advocating for. Connect with the community. So this guy, Jason Hosmer, Homer, sorry, um. He started, I think it was during COVID where people weren't returning their library books because it was COVID and everything was a mess. And finally, they adopted the program of just getting rid of fines, which we've done. And he said, they, and so to connect with the community, not do a library thing, but to just connect with the community. They're like, hey, send us a picture of your cat. If you send us a picture of your cat, then uh, you know, your your fines are all forgiven. And then they had all of these pictures. He was like interviewed by the BBC. And he was on like Good Morning America or something, just like for doing cute little things that don't really have a purpose except to. Have fun and make people like the library, like you were saying, part of your vision that's really important is. If you're gonna work here, you have to be nice and welcoming because we want people to love the library. So um, I thought that was really. Uh, wise. He said, ask ourselves, do we trust our library director? I do. Does the library director trust us? We hope so. We, we hope you would come to us, um, and not feel, he said, it's a lonely place. Cause you're not the staff and you're not a trustee. So you need to feel comfortable and knowing where you can go to get help and asking for help.
And just as an aside, Lynn also started right before COVID, so.
Initiation. Oh, invite town leaders or local legislators to big library events. So invite them to the. Coco hour in December, like invite um, the select people, um, invite. Mister Baldiga or Paul Mark is really good at showing up to stuff, you know, if something's going on, just send them an invitation. Even if they don't come, they're like, oh, South Public Library is a happening place. They got stuff going on all the time. And it lets, you know, it lets them know and they're that, so build the relationships before we then go and ask them for more money. Um, and then there was a panel of three experienced library trustees. And they talked about being clear on the roles of the staff and the director and the friends group, so that we're not tripping over each other. And causing problems for each other. And also, um. Kind of collaborate a little bit, like the friends group. Like maybe, I happen to know someone on the friends group. I was like, hey, can I donate something to the basket raffle? Like, it would have been good for the trustees. I bet a lot of us here may have. Made a donation to the basket raffle. Um, so if we can open up those channels of communication a little better, that might be good for everyone. How do we make a trustee basket? Yeah, Jen. It's the, the, the deadline was the ninth.
No, it's, it's the ninth to the sixteenth, so you have till Saturday. That's so much time.
Alright, alright.
I will add too, before I forget, um, our new chief administrative officer Nicole is coming by for a tour and to meet the staff. Uh, Tuesday, the nineteenth at ten. I'll be. So yeah, that's okay. I just figured I'd add that to anybody who's interested. You do like a nice basket of like local stuff and I think that's cute.
Just give me a minute. Don't let me get distracted by.
Oh, they suggested that we divvy up. So we are very lucky. There are bigger problems at bigger libraries across the state. Um, a lot of them were talking about. Uh, fighting to get social workers on staff because of the homeless populations that use the libraries. Um, just some much more serious issues. However, they did say. That we should divvy up, the trustees should divvy up, looking at the agendas for all of the town meetings. And just be like, okay, you always check the planning board, you always check the select board and. Just in case there's a library adjacent issue going on, so that we are very aware of what's going in town and how it may or may not. Affect the library. Um, and then when making an ask, have the data to back it up. You have all this data. You're gonna ask for a thirty hour position. And you have data to back it up. So you can say, look at this, like, we are doing our job. Look at all of these people. We are. Serving more people. We need more staff.
That's what we've done in the past at some of these finance committee meetings. They'll say, you know. You're there early, so you may have heard DPW or some other department before you or after you. You say. We have thirty-five thousand people and forty thousand people, whatever the numbers that time. Coming to the library every year. And I remember somebody on the FinCon one year said, how do you know? And whoever the library director was detented. Because we're tracking it. Every ten, somebody go through the door, all. You know. Kind of blowing the one. You really have data.
Yeah. Yeah, and then the, um. They shared, the trustees shared on the Massachusetts Library Association website. Uh, and there's another one I found that I thought was easier to use called Centerline Public Library, where you can go in and get an idea of like. Oh, this is how to quantify the services, like this many books, this many audio, whatever. All of like what this is lending pouring into the community as far as resources. And that's another like. Helpful little marketing tool to be like, I sat down, I figured it out for myself and I save over a thousand dollars a year from what I. Borrow from the library. Um, and then the trustee of the year, I just liked his quote, um, he happens to have been a percussionist with Tanglewood. And he said, one person doesn't do this alone. It takes an orchestra, so. I would like to end by saying. If Jen and I put together a trustee's raffle basket, does anyone else want to be part of that or donate to it? And Jen and I can maybe talk about it afterwards.
Yeah, I did one last couple of years for. For commission.
I think that would be, I think that would be nice. And if you had something. On it that says in a nice, you know, not like an in-your-face way, but this is from the library trustees, then. That could be really nice.
I always do one too. I could put it from the library trustees too. So that will be two.
Yeah, the only thing we ask is, um, I'm formed no alcohol, please.
Thank you, sorry. I just, I just put the screws on everyone. Thank you.
You did your ask with your data, so.
That's right. We'll be delivering two. Uh, baskets tomorrow, one from us. Friends of the Agwam Library. We, we, we do that every.
You're alright.
Thank you. Yeah, so um, I know they're setting up the basket Saturday, so Friday's ideal, but if you get it to us first thing on Saturday, I'm sure that's no issue.
What's first thing on Saturday?
We open at ten.
So does first thing equal till one or does it equal till ten thirty?
I would say till like ten thirty, eleven, because they're gonna be here setting up the baskets because. I think technically they're still collecting on Saturday, so you should be fine. Just don't show up at like twelve fifty-five.
We grabbed a list. Where some person has filled out what's in the basket. Pat has the program at home. She's got it all set up. Doing this for years. She then inputs and prints it out, puts all printed out what's in that basket, because people wanna know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Am I gonna put my tickets in this basket or that basket or that basket?
And if it comes in late, we always have a few stragglers. It's not, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, there's usually a few on Monday or Tuesday.
Let's rethink how we're presenting it to our audience. They're not stragglers. They're not late. They're just making an entrance.
Ending with a bang.
You're wearing your boots.
Looks fabulous. What can I say?
This is very nice. Nice summary list, guys.
It sounded, it sounded like an inspiring day.
It was inspiring and we got lunch. It was in, um, right outside of Worcester.
Was it, wasn't it in Shrewsbury?
Yes.
Shootsberry, Shrewsbury?
But I didn't say, because I always compute.
And it was lunch good.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Did, did they have a lot of people?
There were maybe, I would say maybe a hundred people. That's really good. Lot of groups from libraries, um, but yeah. So it seemed like a good group. I haven't heard anything from them since then, but even just the conference, I thought was very helpful.
That also gives you a chance to see some of the staff from the MBLC, because they, they're usual at that conference.
Wonderful. This has been a lively, inspiring meeting. Alright, um, so our next meeting is, um, December tenth at seven PM.
Already?
Oh, I think somebody's looking for you. But yeah, so our next, our next meeting is December tenth at seven PM and if we want to adjourn.
I should do adjourn by Tammy.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I.
Alright, so thank you, everybody. We will see you uh, next month. Have a happy Thanksgiving.